Live.
We're live?
I'm.
We're gonna start anyway like this.
Yep. And there we go.
Okay, good morning, everyone. We are live now. Uh, as you can see, I've got a face mask, glasses, goggles. So before we start, if I start and I'm steaming up already, if somebody has their hand up and I miss it because I can't see it between two glasses, sets of glasses and the plexiglass, somebody say something. Because I'm already starting to get blurry up there. Anyway, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And we're gonna start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. Okay, you can make a disclosure of a key area of interest now or at any point in time through the meeting. We're gonna move on to confirmation of the agenda. We have no additions or deletions that I'm aware of. No, no, okay. Motion to confirm the agenda. Deputy Warden Aggits and I think Council McDermott's got his hand up there. Uh, those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We're gonna move on to consent agenda. And we have consent agenda items five point one to five point seven and the December two six, December sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled or discussed? Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, five point five, I think we should support that. It's uh, I think it's almost similar to the resolution that we had. And I think it just uh, you know, we let them know that we supported and and uh, and let our MP know maybe as well, but I'm not sure trying to recall who it said to send it to. And I don't think it listed a whole lot of people to send it to, so it shouldn't be a lot of work to support that one.
Okay, anything else? They actually only had to go into their local people. They had to go into their MP, their MP. Uh, MP, AMO, oh, no, then it said all of Ontario municipalities.
Well, I don't think we need to send it to everybody, but I think if we let them know that we supported it and maybe send it to Pettapies, I think. And whether you want to send it to, you know, to Ford or Municipal Affairs, that's your call, I guess, Jim.
Well, it's called counsel. I think you more importantly, you might want to send it to the Finance Minister.
Yeah.
And Mr. Clark, I don't know. What do you people think? I see some nod in their head.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of thumbs ups. So we're gonna send it back to the municipality of Tain Township or whatever it is.
Yes.
And we're gonna send it to Premier Ford, Minister Finance, Minister Clark, and MTP Randy Pettapies. So do I have a second around that to do that? That'd be Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? Let's carry. Okay, so I'll go back to the original resolution we can do now. Council receives a consent agenda of items point five point one to five point seven and approves the December sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Move by. Counselor Kazenberg and seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. And move on. Corporate Services, we got the Inspector, three Inspector report, and that will be.
Chad. Perfect. So through the warden, happy new year to council as well as the warden. Um, the November twenty twenty-one forestry inspectors report is before council. I'm going through a little bit of the summary of the report. Marvin Smith, the forestry inspector completed seven inspections, five as a response to the submission of an NOI and two as a response to a question from a landowner. You also see in a net uh monthly report, just an ongoing number of NOIs that we do receive, um, as well as we do plan on bringing a report to council uh in first quarter here, summarizing all the NOIs from from last year as well. So there's any questions regarding Marvin Smith's report, please let me know and I'd be happy to pass those on to him.
Okay, questions for Tyler on that report? Not seeing any hands go up. I have a motion Perth County Council receives the November two thousand and twenty-one Forest Street inspectors report for information moved by Counselor Wellhame, seconded by Counselor Ite. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Okay, we're gonna move on next to general insurance renewal. And I know Cory's here. We'll get Cory in. Morning Cory.
More and more nature since in council.
I'm ready for the insurance portion.
Yes, the report is in front of you. Um, to to put it in terms, uh, the eight percent is actually nonetheless of most municipalities within um, our region. Um, I actually went out and looked around with the other municipalities that had insurance renewals for this year. Um, and they basically with the hardened market, it didn't make sense. Uh, some of them actually went to RFP and they said it was a waste of time. Um, so uh, and the one that I I could indicate is Oxford County is actually seeing a thirty-one percent increase in their insurance uh from the previous year. Um, so our eight percent actually looks pretty good. Um, so it does include cyber insurance as well as it uh is back to the fifty million dollar limit that we originally had with Aon. Uh, it went down to forty million last year, but now it's back up to fifty million. So if there's any questions regarding the report, I'd be happy to ask them.
Okay, questions for Cory on the insurance renewal? Not seeing any hands. Uh, Purse's insurance, I believe, is up twenty percent this year for it. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the general insurance renewal two thousand and twenty-two report. And council approved the general insurance and risk management services contract for two thousand and twenty-two to AON Reet Stanley House, Inc. And the treasurer be authorized to sign the necessary documents to effect the renewal. Move by. Counselor Herlick second by Counselor Wellhame. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? And that is carried. Okay. Next, what everybody's been excited and waiting for with the great anticipation is we're moving on to the two thousand and twenty-two overall budget presentation. And Cory, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Warden. Um, I believe I can get, uh, I don't know if I can get uh to share my screen, but uh, the slide deck is in the agenda. But if I have.
As you can.
Yeah, I'll just bring that up then. So hopefully everybody can see the screen or I'll give it a couple of seconds, but it's sharing now.
It's actually, I could see it in here, Cory, quite well.
Okay, can everybody else see that? Okay, getting some nods, so um. Well, thank you, Warden and council. Uh, it's uh my pleasure and the C A O's pleasure to present uh and the staffs to present, to deliver the two thousand and twenty-two draft uh budget for your considerations. Um, again, municipality budgets across Ontario continue to balance uh the variety of impacts ongoing with COVID nineteen uh as well as um um continuing to balance with reductions in the OMPF or the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. And again, the continued delays, uh, as you noted with K, uh, with current value assessment uh another year, another two years essentially. Um, this uh budget is responsive again and progressive. It reflects the hard work of each of the departments and carefully considers um, uh, the corporate sustainability and resources required to deliver uh programs and services. Um, again, with responsible budget, we are combing again uh levels of inflation that we have not seen uh for quite some time. Um, and it's progressive in the fact that we're using a significant amount of reserves uh through safe restart modernization and levy stabilization uh to mitigate the fluctuation within the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. Um, overall, uh, two thousand and twenty-two budget levy, we're looking at eighteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, fifty-six dollars. Uh, broken down between operating capital, uh, five point four, three percent increase in your in your operating budget and a point four, four percent increase in your capital budget to come to a total of five point eight, seven percent or an increase of just over one million dollars. Uh, assessment growth, uh, we actually in two thousand and twenty-one was a very strong year for Perth County with assessment growth. Uh, we seen approximately about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which represents about two point six, three of your overall five point eight, seven percent. Uh, with the growth, uh, reduces our uh overall increase to three point two, three percent uh from two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this is the uh median homes within Perth County. You'll notice that a single family home in Perth County, based on again, two thousand and sixteen values uh valued at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand uh based on this increase would be uh equivalent to twenty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Farmland uh at a value of a just under one point five million would see an increase of thirty dollars and ninety-seven cents. This is in your um overall budget binders, but it's a it's a historical look at where we've gone from two thousand and twelve to today. Um, what's not in the binder and note is the tax rate changes. Uh, it's essentially that orange line within the uh graph. And you'll notice that uh in some years, uh, that line was actually, we saw decreases in our tax rates uh from seventeen to twenty twenty. And with the last two years, uh, two thousand and twenty-one being uh around two point eight percent. And what you're looking at today is about three point one, five percent increase into the tax rate. Again, the operating uh uh reserves are being utilized in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we have a total of just under nine hundred thousand dollars of uh reserves being utilized uh with about five hundred and forty-three thousand being coming from the levy stabilization reserve uh with uh three hundred and thirty-one of that being temporary increases that we're seeing as well as another two hundred and twelve thousand to mitigate the OMPF reduction. Uh, we have incorporated uh COVID dollars. We still have COVID dollars carried over from two thousand and twenty-one. And there's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars within this budget. And and then overall, uh, we still have modernization money that we got back in two thousand and nineteen that we earmarked for into the two thousand and twenty-two year, and it's approximately about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This a hundred and sixty-five thousand after it's been utilized should uh uh take away the remaining balance that we have uh that we received back in two thousand and nineteen. Um, this is the uh what you guys saw last year and the overall uh strategy to mitigate the um uh OMPF reductions to note again is the uh reserve balance of uh just around a million dollars uh with reducing it by the five hundred thousand that you saw previously to offset operations. Um, and then it's our OMPF reduction. Uh, so historically, again, over the next uh tech eight years, um, this blue line uh becomes significantly lower than what we still have to lose in the overall um levy. Um, so by two thousand and thirty, we still have uh just over two hundred thousand to receive in transition money. Um, but we uh overall, we don't have a very much within the less than a hundred thousand in the levy stabilization reserve based on the forecasts. So again, you saw his own PF reductions, we we see eighty-five percent of the previous years. Um, what we still have remaining based on a one percent increase to the levy is about five percent. Um, it it is overall a point nine percent effect to the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Uh, and we're utilizing about two hundred and twelve thousand to offset or mitigate that uh impact. Um, uh, within the uh overall presentation, you'll get into the operations desire. Uh, uh, body requests or uh the salary analysis. Uh, within that analysis, uh, you'll notice that COLA actually impacts the overall twenty-two cost by two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Uh, the market review that was approved back in uh May of two thousand and twenty-one uh is impacting the this cost for this twenty, this budget about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand or a close to one percentage uh impact to the budget levy. Uh, the county has forecasted eight bodies, but you'll notice it within the analysis that's that you receive that is significantly more, uh, but we'll get into that within the operations. And one of those additional many additional bodies is is the effect of uh potential provincial funding related to community paramedicine. Uh, within that analysis as well, we've identified anywhere that is temporary in nature and is not essentially affecting the levy uh as we're utilizing reserves or other grants to deal with those temporary uh uh changes. Uh, the within the binder to note, you'll notice that there is uh and uh we'll get into the division managers and directors to speak to these. Uh, but you'll notice there's one information technology technician, uh, one service, uh, uh, paramex services logistics coordinator. Uh, an increase of about point nine of backfill related to paramedics. Uh, three, uh, related, what you proved already was a contract planner related to the O P A. There is a records management intern and the communications officer uh temporary in nature and on being offset by grants or reserves of approximately about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Uh, within, as noted before, within there as well as there's one paramedic services M I H, which is uh tied to the community paramedicine, um, but it's anticipated that it this will be funded from the province uh for the next uh two and a bit years. Um, it also includes an assistant to the prosecutor prosecutor position. Uh, it was temporary in nature before, but we're, but it's now being looked at to be a full-time position. Uh, and then this has no impact to the levy as it's uh as it's funded uh through the profits and then distributed to the member municipalities and partners. And also, there's one facility worker within this budget. Um, within facilities as well, uh, we deal with internal rent, which affects levies. Um, but we're not anticipating to adjust rents uh that would have an effect on the overall levy, but it would have an effect on what's being transferred to the reserves. And we'll come back to that when we, when we look at uh the capital reserve and the overall and facilities itself. Um, and nice lead into the capital budgets, uh, two thousand and twenty-two capital budget, uh, which will be talked discussing later today. Um, there's fifteen point three million dollars in uh in about forty-three total projects for for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, six point nine million not being funded from reserves. Uh, four point six being funded from federal gas tax, provincial OSIF and our municipal partners. And three point six within this budget binder being uh funded from external financing. Um, and then we're looking at about three point three, six million uh of the capital levy being transferred for future capital projects. And little aside from the asset management. We've presented last year that uh it it was more aggressive increases for roads as noted. Uh, but with this OSIF money that we had been identified, I I believe everybody's aware that um, the provinces essentially doubled the envelope for for OSIF. Uh, we've incorporated that within our ten-year uh continuities. And when we talk about roads, you'll note uh see that. Um, we were uh on a uh trajectory of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in roads to get to a four million dollar levy, capital levy for roads itself. Uh, but with this additional funding, this is the weird thing about it is uh, the province could come in and provide this sustainable amount of funding, which could have a significant impact on what we're uh required to transfer to the reserves to be fully funded. Um, so you know that i- in this, we're looking to get the um uh roads levy up to just about two and a half million as the additional funding from federal grants as well as the OSIF has a significant impact on how much we need to uh essentially levy on an annual basis uh with this funding. Again, um, we don't know if it'll continue on, but with this OSIF dollars, it's it is identified is that it's we'll continue on for the next three years. Uh, but uh with any province, when you get into a a funding program, uh, we've seen it with the federal gas tax. Uh, they get to a situation where municipalities rely on that uh funding to make um, uh, appropriate decision-making and I it's gonna get to a point where I I feel that the OSIF uh dollars will continue on. Um, but we'll also note is that uh as the roads levy has gone down to where we need to get to. And it's a more aggressive approach on the uh bridges and culverts as uh with the director of public works uh has identified that uh there's more things that are coming down the pipe with uh bridges and culverts. That is a significant impact to the bridges and culverts that reserves. And and we'll get into that discussion when we uh uh talk about capital. Um, this is uh within the budget banner as well. This is the continuity of capital reserves all the way back to two thousand and ten. Um, you'll note that uh that balance is uh just over two million dollars forecasted by two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, there is a significant amount of reserves currently in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, but i- it is looked in the program to be utilizing those reserves to bring that down to 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 a very low level, about two million dollars in all our capital reserves. Uh, it did, the uh budget does also again include additional costs related to the pandemic. Uh, significant areas is facilities, technology, services. They will continue to be impacted in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and then the safe restart money uh with that we have to combat the COVID nineteen. Uh, we do have money uh from two thousand and twenty-one that we received in two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. Uh, that is anticipated to cover those costs as noted about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand within the uh operations. Uh, this is a kind of a good snapshot of what makes a budget. Um, uh, I'm gonna put a kudos out to Sarah Franklin. Uh, she kind of pulled this together and and branded it in in this way. Uh, but what this is identifying is our services that we provide to the citizen. And uh, what is the cost per a hundred thousand dollars of assessment? And again, assessment based on two thousand and sixteen values. Um, so you know that the biggest areas are public works, uh, capital infrastructure renewal, uh, as well as paramedics. Uh, but those are the services that we provide and we're, and I, again, we try to break it out like what what is the cost of the health unit to a citizen in uh North Perth? It's a twelve dollars and ninety-three cents per a hundred thousand dollars of assessment. And to that, I'm gonna put out the questions from council.
Hey, thanks Cory. Uh, if you want to stop the split screen, then I might see somebody.
For sure.
Now we're back. Okay, questions for Cory on the overall budget presentation? Counselor Herlick.
It's more of a comment. Yeah, no, I I I realize this as well to the um something, of course, we try to keep in mind where it was in two thousand and eighteen, where we are and how it's looking. These are things to console. Um, as we can do things and such. We we keep in mind how much is going to be done from the conferences and no, it's it's a it's a good budget here again. It's it's just good. Well, I'm looking for what I see well laid out things, Cory.
Other questions, comments? I'm not seeing any hands go up. I know this wasn't the first pass they made at the budget. They'd made one earlier on. And had to go back to the drawing board to get some reductions, so they have worked hard on this. So at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to receive the two thousand and twenty-two overall budget presentation, and all we're doing is approving the Cory's presentation to us. And we're gonna get into detail on the budget here right shortly, but uh like I have that motion moved by somebody, uh, Counselor Wellhame, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay. So uh next we were gonna go through capital budget presentation, I T public works and paramedic services in the binder. I have one quick question. Seven point two point two. Actually, well, that's all right. We're gonna go through the presentation as it is. And I'm gonna delay one other motion till later on. So do we have uh John coming up here shortly?
Uh, through through the warden, uh, it it based on the binder, we'll start with uh Steve Drake, our I T um manager of information.
Oh, yeah, we got I T in there, so.
Correct, and so um.
He's here.
Through yourself as well. I'm just trying to think, do you, um, does Tyler want me to share my screen with the budget binder? So for the people at home.
How many people don't have a copy of this budget at home?
I I'm speaking if anybody else is watching today.
Well, that's true.
So through the war and yeah, Cory, you can share your screen if that's okay with you and and walk through it uh as each manager will present or director will present their their section.
That that's great. And then I could uh preamble the overall tab two um as well.
Okay, so we get Steve up there.
Just coming in.
All right. There's Steve. Morning. We're ready for the I T portion of the capital budget.
Uh, well, I'll preamble it as uh just uh before Steve talks about. Uh, so within the budget binder, you have those uh forty-three projects uh broken out uh as detailed to get you your fifteen point three million in total and how it's funded. Um, as that's the first item. And then the next item is a uh breakdown of the ten-year of capital for uh all the projects and and such within the county. As you get down and then uh uh overall, the next section is is what we do is try to show council on a ten-year continuity of reserves. Uh, so this item here is the ten-year continuity for the uh computer systems reserve and how uh we are funding projects and the money that goes in to make sure we have money to do these projects. Uh, so so other than that, there's no other questions. I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to uh present um uh our our fi- finest fire radio equipment.
Okay, now it's your turn, Steve. Thanks, Cory. Uh, good morning, Warden and members of council. So I'm gonna review the computer systems capital projects planned for two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, I'll pause after each one if there are any questions or or comments for them. So first up is C F zero 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 one, fire radio equipment. So the fire radio equipment system is a wireless radio communication system used by the fire services of Perth East, North Perth, West Perth and the town of Saint Mary's to communicate during fire events. The system is made up of equipment owned and operated by each of the fire services and the backbone network uh equipment currently managed by the county. In two thousand and twenty-one, working with our local support provider and the fire chiefs, we successfully completed an important and complex transfer of the fire dispatching service to a new vendor, Owen Sound Police Services. The transition went live on January fifth with no disruption to services or the residents. The new vendor is already prepared to meet the upcoming next generation nine-one-one requirements and provides a system and service with more scalability and redundancy than the previous one. Also, in two thousand and twenty-one, we started the initial phase of planned system equipment upgrades. The current plan is to replace all of the main system components over the next two years. These replacements will improve system performance and stability as well as provide new technological options for further system enhancements in the future. In two thousand and twenty-two, we plan to continue the next phase of equipment upgrades, replacing aging paging and communications equipment located at each tower site. We will work with our local support provider and the fire chiefs to ensure that all new equipment and system changes will improve system stability, performance and redundancy in order to meet everyone's needs now and into the future. The equipment identified for replacement has aged to the point where good system design and maintenance dictates its replacement to ensure continued service levels. Are there any questions or comments for C F zero 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 one?
Uh, just speak up because I can't necessarily see the people. So if you got a question, just ask.
Where? Hey, there, Warden. It's Daryl.
Okay.
Uh, no, just curious, um, I you'll see me ask this question again, just where this equipment? Where this equipment comes from? How many sources are you able to trace it from? Is it pretty, pretty tight looped?
Uh, yeah, it's pretty tight looped. The one caveat we have obviously is we have a a service provider and we have. What is it now? Five different locations? So we have to ensure that any of the equipment that we purchase obviously is compatible and will work with the other. Five locations and there's there's several pieces that sort of fit together. So when you buy one piece, you have to make sure that it is compatible with. The other pieces that connect into it that make up the entire system. So there there's there's not really a lot of wiggle room as far as uh uh equipment types. Uh, specifically for the the system we're using currently and the technology, but we do our best to uh to get the best pricing possible.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else with a question? Okay, move on, Steve.
Uh, next up is CN zero 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 one network equipment. So the purpose of this project is to purchase equipment related to the network infrastructure. Due to age or new needs requirements that develop. So purchases planned for twenty twenty two include replacement video equipment for two meeting spaces. And new equipment, new audio equipment for the courthouse council chambers. So a portion of the cost of the new audio equipment will actually be funded from an existing ISIP grant. Uh, that is a part of a larger council chambers renovation project. The pandemic has had a definite impact on how meetings are conducted. And obviously, this will influence how we design any new meeting spaces moving forward. The council chambers is a dual purpose room hosting both POA court and council meetings. So our aim is to have a setup that works for both purposes if possible. Are there any questions for CN zero 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 one?
I have a question. What happens when we um make our new council chambers? Are we gonna take some of this equipment over there or this equipment will all stay?
I I would think the plan right now is what we're looking at is having equipment that can be sort of portable. Um, so that we can take it with us if if we build and design a new uh council chambers for sure.
But if we do that, will it not be cumbersome to keep moving it around? Like. That's why, like, I know we need something for the POA, but maybe we don't need to spend quite as many dollars so that when we. Um, do something different. We can have something more permanent in the in the new council chambers and not have to keep shifting it around.
Yeah, absolutely. We can take a look at that. That's that's a good idea specifically for the long term planning for um. Where council's going to be in the in the next year for sure. So uh we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
But in all likelihood, your council chambers up on the third floor is always gonna be your council chamber. It's just a question of when we get back to using it.
Correct.
Right now, it doesn't have the equipment to use it.
But I thought when we're when we look at our other things we're doing on the campus, we may put a council chambers there. Is that not correct?
No, I think it's to my knowledge, it's staying where it is right now. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I thought the plan showed that there was gonna be a council chambers in that building, but.
No.
It's the meeting room.
Other questions? Again, I can't see hardly anybody. Cory's got his hand up. Uh Cory, you got your hand up?
Uh, through the warden uh as well to this uh audio equipment that is being funded through the ISIP program. Um, the ISIP uh program actually provided a extensive extension to the money to be spent. Uh, originally was supposed to be spent by the December thirty first of twenty twenty one. Uh, we now have until twenty twenty three uh to spend the dollars. So o- overall, hopefully it runs along with uh the council chamber renovations. As well as the renovations to uh of um five year old.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we're gonna move on to the next subject then, Steve.
Okay, next up is CP zero 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 one printers. So the purpose of this project is to purchase printing equipment to replace existing devices due to age or to meet new needs requirements. Printing equipment identified for replacement in twenty two in twenty twenty two includes one large format plotter printer. Uh, with the current age of over twelve years. So this replacement was actually originally budgeted for and ordered in twenty twenty one, but uh due to the current inventory and supply chain issues related to the pandemic. We will not actually receive the new printer until Q one of twenty twenty two. So we're just rolling this project forward to reflect that. So are there any questions for CP zero 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 one?
Not seeing anything, not hearing anything. We'll move on to the next one there, Steve.
Okay, next up is CS zero 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 one software licensing. So the purchase of the, or sorry, the purpose of this project is to purchase new or replacement software licenses in order to maintain vendor support. Uh, meet legal compliance or changes in service requirements. So in twenty twenty two, the plan is to purchase Windows server operating system licenses required for a new server machine. Also planned for purchase in twenty twenty two. Uh, are there any questions for CS zero 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 one?
Uh, hearing any? We'll move on to the next one.
Okay, next is CV zero 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 one server replacements. Uh, the purpose of this project is to purchase new server hardware to replace those past their useful age. Out of vendor warranty or due to new organizational service requirements. So servers are the backbone of our digital system, providing access to the applications and resources that staff rely on to deliver our services. In twenty twenty two, the plan is to replace one out of warranty server that will be over eight years old. The manufacturer service warranty on the server to be replaced expired in late twenty twenty one, so keeping this unit in production will result in extra costs and staff timing to maintain. If not replaced. Are there any questions for CV zero 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 one?
Not seeing any hands, not hearing anything. We'll go on to the next one.
Okay, next up is CW zero 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 two EMS tough book replacement. So the purpose of this project is to purchase specialized rugged laptop computers required by the paramedics in the field. To document and transmit patient information and call specifics. These devices need to operate in demanding conditions while providing the durability and reliability needed by our paramedics. In twenty twenty two, three rugged laptops will be purchased and funded as part of the community paramedicine for long term care program. Are there any questions for CW zero 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 two?
Not seeing or hearing anything. Well, gonna move on to the next one.
Okay, and finally is CW zero 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 four workstation replacements. The purpose of this project is to purchase computers to replace those past their useful age or due to changes in staffing requirements. In twenty twenty two, the plan is to purchase eight computers. The units to be replaced are no longer under warranty and are past the current useful life threshold set at seven years. Uh, part of the purchase cost will also be funded as part of the community paramedicine for long term care program. Are there any questions for CW zero 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 four?
Do I see a hand at the top there? Councillor Wilhelm, was your hand up?
Yeah, uh, this isn't really with the computers, but uh I guess uh my question would be, have we looked at? And is there any benefit to looking into storage in the cloud? For Perth County?
Uh, absolutely. One of the the items that we're actually discussing is part of the ongoing IT and J A strat plan. Is a cloud governance policy. Um, we do have some services in the cloud currently, not not a lot, but there are a few. So this is something that we want to take a look at and. Uh, at minimum, you we want to develop some sort of policy and process around it determining. Uh, when is the best time to do it and sort of the criteria for deciding when to do it? So this is absolutely on the radar for us and um. I I would think that as we go through this, uh, we'll probably reach out to the other IT staff at the other municipalities just to see where they are with it and and share all the information we gathered. And sort of what we're finding as we go through this.
Steve? Other questions or comments? Well, we're not hearing any, so it looks like we're good here, Steve.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. Next, we're gonna move on to bridges. Bridges. Cory, you gonna preface this one?
Uh, yeah, just just as uh John will be uh essentially taking control, uh he uh he has a presentation slide deck as well. That he will be um providing. Um, the only thing that I will uh note is that uh as identified in my overall presentation. It's the increase in the uh capital levy related to bridges and culverts. Um, and the impact, uh, we were looking at increasing at twenty thousand a year to get to where we needed to get, but. Uh, there are some items that have come up that in our ten year uh continuity that has said that we need, we probably should be putting about forty thousand dollars away. But uh I I'll turn it over to to um. To John and he can uh uh speak to it as well. Um, or Bill, I believe. It's it's a it's a tag team effort between John and Bill. So I've stopped sharing my screen, so uh John can take over.
Morning, John. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Warden Herson, and good morning, council. I'm just trying to uh share my screen here with you. And are people able to see the presentation on the screen? Gordon, if you can nod your head, I can.
Yeah, yeah, I can see it. Even through the bar.
Okay, thank you and good morning. And uh Bill Wilson and I will be presenting the twenty twenty two capital budget. For bridges and culverts, roads, facilities and fleet. And if Cory can stay on the line uh as we discuss all this. And as well, if we can get Chief Adair on the line when we get to fleet and that will be at the end of our presentation. Uh, this year, we're gonna forego my rather long winded annual asset management lesson for you. Uh, we will be discussing asset management throughout twenty twenty two. Um, we have some. A regulation five eighty eight slash seventeen, I think it is Cory, that. Uh, we've got some uh uh requirements that we have to meet in in twenty twenty two. Uh, so we'll be talking more about that as it pertains to level of service with our linear assets. Uh, I would note also note that uh we've had a few last minute updates and changes that are not necessarily reflected in your budget binders. That you were given back in December. And we'll do our very best to point out these uh during the presentation. Uh, Bill and I will present project details for each of the divisions. And then we'll pause at the end of each division so that council, if you have any questions or comments. And uh first up here, we're gonna have Bill Wilson and our bridges and culverts twenty twenty two budget.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh, good morning, Warden Herson and council. Uh, the first slide here that we have in front of you is with regards to the continuity schedule as uh. Cory had uh briefly overviewed um for the the ten year uh reserve. Um. The ten year reserve balance for the bridges and culvert structures. Um, I think, I'm not sure, Cory, do you want to get into that now or um? T- towards the end when we uh when we look at the roads uh continuity schedule?
Uh, all I identified uh um to council is that uh. Uh, as we move through, uh there we do collect a pot of money related to the capital levy. Um, and as we uh get more information, uh, we modify that as we go. Um, and what has been identified is that uh we we essentially increased the bridges and culverts reserves on an annual basis slightly. Uh, but it significantly reduced what we requirement within the roads reserves. Um, but again, wh- what you like to see within the reserve that it never dips below zero. Um, so as you can see in this next ten year continuity is that uh uh we have that in in those reserves. And I I just add to that, um, and and this is policy side of things and I and I continue to kind of talk about it. But it it's it's what what's the what's the level that council's uh sufficient uh to to keep in those reserves. Uh, on an uh annual or or um fifty years or thirty year basis. Uh, but that's something that I'm looking at uh within my uh twenty ten twenty two work plan is bring those uh those items back to council.
Thank you. And I think one thing I just wanna note here is that in twenty twenty three, um. There is a culvert replacement that is planned on Perth Line eighty six. Um. That one, I just, that is a full replacement, so that'll be a boundary project with Wellington County. Uh, we're kind of in the infancy stages of planning for that one, but. The condition of that structure, um, it's it's something that we're hoping to include in in um twenty twenty three's. Um, capital program, but. Uh, for the purpose of this, we'll go through now um the the four projects that we have planned for this year's budget. With the first one being a bridge rehab uh structure one twenty one zero three four. And that is a rigid frame structure that lies just north of Pool on Perth Road one twenty one. Um, we have had a a detailed assessment inspection done on that apart from our OSIM inspections. Um, and that has given us a construction estimate of three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Um, it will include. Mostly concrete patch repairs to the to the soffit and the wing walls, um, as well as replacement of the. Um, the guardrail system, uh, the end treatments. And then, of course, the waterproofing and paving of that bridge deck. Uh, we like to. Get these structures done ahead of when we have our planned road work and in our ten year plan for our. Road capital construction projects, this section of one twenty one is planned for reconstruction in twenty twenty three. So that's why we have this one um included in this budget year. Uh, as well as the the condition of the structure, so. Um. I think that's all I have to comment on that one. Uh, as you can see, if you just wanna flip back to that one there, quick, John. Just that that one picture shows kind of the uh. The uh condition of the the soffit of that bridge. There is some exposed rebar under there. Um, and there is some millennial cracking along the railing systems of that structure too that needs some attention. So that's uh, we'll be looking to tender that project. In conjunction with this this next following one here. Which is bridge structure one twenty one zero seven eight. And that is a multi-span um T beam bridge which is in Millbank. Um. It's basically right in between the the two legs of seventy two there on Perth Road one twenty one. Um, it is similar in scope. Uh, this bridge is a little bit larger and it it's in a little bit worse condition than the the previous one there. But again, uh, most of this work is going to be limited to concrete repairs of the. The soffit and the the wing walls and uh the girder system on that as well. Um. The guide rail system on it will be replaced and there is some surface drainage on that structure that needs attention and that will be. Um, remedied by installing some spillways on the surface of that and then doing some work with the actual. The the bridge deck drains um to keep that water off the bridge and um and keep it uh flowing. Um. You know, so it's not laying on the bridge how it is now. And then. Um, both of these two structures here will be reduced to single lane closure uh during construction, so. The contractor will work on one half of the bridge, um waterproof that and then flip over to the other side and uh and do the repairs on that, the uh the other side. Uh, okay, next slide. Small culverts, um, this budget item is for small diameter culverts which uh have spans less than three meters. Um, they do not fall into our OSIM inspection reports, um, just given their their span. Uh, this year in particular, there are a number of culverts uh planned for replacement. That meet this criteria on um Perth Road one oh one or Oxford twenty four, so that's um east of Tavistock. And that's uh Oxford County. It's a boundary road between uh Perth and Oxford and. Oxford County will be um leading this project here and. Are planning to replace these smaller diameter culverts um through this enti- and are planning to replace these smaller diameter culverts through this entire road section here. And that is being done in advance of capital work that's planned for that road surface in twenty twenty four, I believe. And then also within that budget, there is funds which will remain for other culverts on our county road network that that haven't necessarily been identified yet, but will be through our routine inspection program and as well as anything that comes up throughout this this budget year. Next slide there. And we've also included in this budget work in progress fifty thousand dollars. And that is to allow us to do some more detailed inspections and project planning for future bridge work. Just in reviewing our our OSIM report, which was completed in twenty twenty one, there are a a number of structures that have they've already kind of gone through one or two major rehabs within their life and some of the some of these structures are approaching sixty, seventy five years in age. And just I would say Perth Line twenty is maybe a good example. There's a number of bridge structures along there that we would like to do some more detailed inspections on and get some better better construction estimates so that we can plan that that continuity schedule a little bit better and refine those numbers and see exactly where we're going to land with some of these projects and how they can fit in there. We would be looking to work with our consultants and go through and do some more detailed investigations on on some structures that are nearing that 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 capital requirements of which is identified in the next five to ten years where they're going to need some capital dollars input into them. So this year, we're hoping will allow us to further refine some divide design work and seek some project approvals and get some pre-engineering work done on on some of these structures. Think that's it for the Bridges Division. And if there's any questions on those four projects, John and I are here to answer any of them.
Thanks, Bill. So we've got the bridges and culverts gone through. So was any questions in regards to those? Counselor Herlick, I think, has got his hand up.
Great to you, Warden. Yeah, Bill, I'm just curious. The rebar on the bottom side of these bridges, it always seems to be an issue. And being around construction and in the city for years too, I tend to notice sometimes it looks like the rebar wasn't spaced correctly. Or is it an engineering issue? Is there not enough concrete on the bottom? These rebar ends up popping through all the time. Is this something we can address to association or something to look at? Or is it simply humidity and and a combination of salt creeping under the underside of these bridges? And popping up the concrete? Just is there something that could be re-engineered or I don't know? It just seems like it's an issue that plagues a lot of bridges. Thanks.
Yeah, no, three Warden Herson. I think some of those structures, the newer structures, it's epoxy coated rebar. And I think historically, some of that, some of those technologies weren't present during the original construction of this or some of these structures. And that's why you're seeing it in combination with the the exposure to the to the salts and the chlorides there. It's just a, it's not a a real ideal environment for that. But I think with the the newer epoxy coated rebar and the waterproofing and and some of those technologies that are incorporated into these newer designs, it has improved that. But that is something that our consultants will be, you know, they'll be looking at that stuff for us as well, so.
Other comments or questions? If you I see, I don't see anything. I think we're good to move on. So we're gonna move on to the road.
Okay, here's a look at the continuity schedule for our roads. I'm not sure if Corey has any anything to add to to this slide here.
I I do actually. So you notice that items that are are we're looking to try to get to two, two and a half million. If you look at the blue line within there, two and a half million with the additional revenues from the gas tax, OCF, etc. Essentially gets us to our our required five million or five point five point zero five million dollar capital program that I believe Bill and John will get into when talking about the overall roads program for the outgoing. But you just denote that we're at two point four currently, we're asking for two point four to five for twenty twenty two. So we're we're a hundred thousand dollar gap essentially to get to what we feel is is a program that is sufficient enough to run the carry roads.
Thanks, Corey. To, yeah, here we go. So the first project that's identified is the traffic lights on Perth Line eighty six at Tremayne in Listowel. This project here, it's been in the budget for a number of years now and it's it's a development-driven project regarding the lunar subdivision at that corner of Listowel. It's it's a condition of the subdivision agreement where it says that the county will secure financial resources to to coordinate the installation of a westbound turning lane and traffic signalization. If the traffic impact study identifies those upgrades are to be to be developed, the the cost of this program would be offset and funded by the developer of that project. So simply holding a line item in our budget for that for that project, if it were to go ahead, not likely that it will this year, but it may.
Just one item, Councilor Wilhelm actually identified it. It it shows up within the tenure continuity as a line item called other grants and subsidies municipal. But actually, it's other agencies, it's the development company that would be offsetting the cost of this, not the municipality or another municipality, just just to highlight it was it. It's an error within the tenure continuity that Counselor Wilhelm had identified.
Okay, Perth Line eight, it's be our first capital road project in this budget. We're budgeting two point five eight million dollars for it. The it would be a recycle repave job from Perth Road one sixty three to Highway twenty three Kirkton. It's approximately eleven and a half kilometer stretch of road. We'd be looking to do a hundred mil recycle and then repave with fifty five millimeter hot mixed asphalt surface. There is a culvert replacement that we have designed ready on on this road section as well. It's closer to the eastern limits of this project and it is on the Barnett Drain. That culvert, we're we have to work within the timelines of the the Conservation Authority. So we can't get in there to do any work till mid-July, I believe. So that would be the first thing to go on this road. We're still kicking around the idea of whether we do that replacement internally or incorporate it into this this road contract. It will kind of come down to scheduling and and availability of internal forces. The road section here, it's actually performed really well. It's twenty seven years old. But it is, it is in poor condition. That was identified in the twenty twenty Rose Need Study. And this construction process will be similar to what we have done in the past where we recycle and repave, re-shoulder. There's a number of mature trees along this road that are are growing quite close to the road shoulder. We want to remove any of those trees that are displaying signs of dying essentially or in poor condition. I think that's that's it to cover that project. Perth Road one thirty one, this is a fourteen kilometer section of road from the north limit of Milverton to Perth Line eighty six. The road is in quite poor condition. It's a class three roadway. We are looking to do a colder place recycle. However, we're looking to go deeper than what we normally would do. This would be a six inch recycle. The purpose of that is to incorporate as much or all of the underlying or existing road that the existing payment structure of that road seems to range between about six inches to eight inches, depending on location through there. Hundred and fifty millimeter recycle is as deep as we're comfortable going to ensure that we can get compaction on that. Following that recycling process, we would look to resurface with fifty five milliliter or fifty five millimeter hot mix overlay. And that will give us a pavement structure of about two hundred, two hundred millimeters or greater. There are a couple culverts and flood pipes to replace there, particularly up closer to eighty six on the the two turning lanes there. And then through the village of Carthage, there is some curb and gutter there that we will be looking to do some removal and replace just certain sections of it. And that will just to ensure drainage through there and take care of the road water through that village. Just to note that this road is it's a full load road. So that's why we're looking to increase the strength of it through this construction project as well. Next slide. Perth Road one thirty nine, from the limits of Saint Mary's out to Wayland Line, just over nine kilometers. This project, we're looking to do some fiber mat, Sammy spot treatment to some of the areas that are showing more degradation and deformation as far as wheel rutting and some cracking on the asphalt surface. And then following that, we would be adding another layer of hot mixed surface. And that is to increase the strength of that road and get that road structure up to a minimum of a hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy five millimeters. Currently, it is, it it has a little bit less of structure than what we'd like to see. It's about a hundred and twenty five millimeters right now, which includes seventy five millimeters of recycled material with fifty millimeters of hot mix on top. I think that's all to note on that road there. Actually, there's there's a large bridge structure there and we, that bridge is one that's identified that it's going to need some work in the next one to five years here. So we are going to skip over that bridge deck with this project. We'll mill short of it and and skip over it and then continue. And then we can we can worry about that bridge deck once we get into that bridge project itself. That project's budgeted at one point two million. Next slide. And similar to previous budget years, we like to carry a budget of twenty five thousand dollars for work in progress for capital road projects. This budget allows us to pre-design and do some field work and preliminary design and estimates on future road projects. And then those expenses that are incurred are expense to those road projects once they become a capital project in their construction year. That's all for the roads.
Thanks, Bill. So we're gonna open it up for some questions here. If we could drop a split screen for a minute, I might see people. Or is that too much of us? Because we're not, we're moving into buildings after that, so. Doesn't appear to be any questions. There any questions?
It's Daryl.
All right.
Yeah, Warden. Corey there and Bill, you were talking trees. I know of a few spots, yeah, where trees they big, especially when you get mature maples and such and they butter up the shoulder of these roads. I'm sure it's something you keep an eye on, but I was aware of a couple areas I've seen in the last couple of years where this was going on and know it's something to keep. As much as we encourage tree planting, when those maple get big, boy, those roots push. And I have seen it more than once, you know, where it's
Other comments or questions? I got a couple little questions. Can't let you off that easy, Bill. On start with one thirty nine, that road really only lasted about eleven years for the last reconstruction. So is there something on there? I know you said the pavement thickness wasn't as much as you anticipated or wanted. But like there needs to be no drainage work or anything done here because eleven years really isn't long enough for a reconstruction on a road.
Maybe I can answer that, Warden Herson.
Sure.
I I was around when we last reconstructed this. And it it was a seventy five millimeter recycle and then fifty millimeters of hot mixed asphalt. And that was done back in two thousand and nine. And one of the things we saw that year was a very wet fall. And this was sort of a late job. We got the recycling done in good time. And but there was quite a delay when it came to the hot mixed asphalt application. I think that was done in either late September, early October. And what we noticed in, I guess, in during the winter time and then as as you started to thaw in 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 March and April is that there is like a kind of a washboard effect. And so what we had was a lot of moisture trapped in underneath there. Again, the late hot mixed asphalt, that's not ideal in a construction project. It's something we try to avoid if we can. And just a lot of things contributed to this. So the structure of the roadway is less than ideal or less thickness than we would like to see. And certainly, this is a full load road. So we want to ensure that this has proper structure. If you recall, we did have this scheduled for pavement preservation. But because of those full load conditions and just taking another look at this roadway, it we just deemed it to be much better if we and probably more cost effective if we applied another layer of hot mix. So typically, your pavement preservation strategies do not offer a lot in the way of structure. And so this was what we're ultimately after. And then we're gonna take care through this project, a number of areas where we see more cracking, some areas like for the instance in Rannick and things like that, you'll see more cracking. I think that's sort of on the picture in the lower part of the screen here. And so it's just a fiber mat application. We did this application, it was just a spot treatment type of thing or strips of of the fiber mat. We did that below our bonded wearing course on one thirty five. I believe that was back in is that twenty nineteen? I can't or twenty twenty. I can't remember exactly. But that's really been performing well. So that's what we're ultimately after here. But correct, you you know, this is about halfway through its lifespan. And that's typically on a roadway where we look to do a pavement preservation at that particular And that's typically on a roadway where we'd love to do a pavement preservation at that particular time period. We've just chosen to uh do a different method here and and get a little more strength within the roadway. So I hope that answers your question.
Yep, that's good. Uh, and so just another couple little quick questions. Let's be back, Martin, Bill. Uh, Perth Line eight and the road that goes up through uh. One thirty one, there actually has to be a bit of culvert work done on those. So you mentioned on the uh line eight, you couldn't even start that maybe till July. Cause of the conservation authority not letting you. So I guess my concern is sometimes if you do a cut there and put a culvert in. You never really get it packed well enough if you're paving it before the year's over. You'll always have that little. Would we consider doing a bore if they're not that big a culvert or what are we looking at there?
Yeah, that that particular culvert, it's it's an open bottom. Concrete box culvert right now, and it's had um two end treatments put on it, so it. It runs under the road on a skew and then it it comes out on on more of a ninety degree rope or ninety degrees to the road. Um, we'd want to straighten that out the best we can um and. The replacement that we're looking at doing here is with a a corrugated steel pipe um. And the turnaround time on that, it it should be within a week. That project should be remove the old one, roll the new pipe in and. And reopen the road to traffic, but. Uh, we would have to backfill and compact those lifts um small lifts um. Probably would be looking to have compaction tests done as we rebuild that up. Um, to ensure that we uh, you know, that we minimize any settlement that might occur on on that structure um. There's not a lot of cover available on that road structure either, so. Um, and that that culvert we were hoping to do this past fall, but um just. The approval process um. Took longer than expected, and and by the time that we actually had permits in our hands to do that work. We were preparing for winter season, so um. Yeah, I agree, not ideal. We'd like to at least give it a year um to let things settle out in place, but. I think that if if we do this job um and. And um pay close attention to our backfill and the material that we're backfilling with, that we can minimize any settlement on that road. Um, over that culvert.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I'll I'll only comment after your comments where at least you got the permit. Uh, Daryl, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, through you, Warden. Thanks. Yeah, no, Bill, you talk about the compaction and and getting testing done. And that's something I've noticed myself has got better even in in the construction world. The availability of of tooling and compactors for these apartments on skid stairs and. And mini excavators and such, and that's something that has improved, I find. And maybe you as well, Bill, have noticed that too, but it's no secret years ago. That that tooling just wasn't available, compacters and nice handy ones, and I think a lot of shoddy work. Or it's just not knowing, snuck through. You know, that's interesting. I'm glad you have the permit. It's a little frustrating, but no, thanks.
And if I might just add there, I think both of you uh pointed out a very good concern here. It's something. We've considered, I think that's exactly why we are looking at doing this uh through our internal forces. We we do have a lot of experience uh uh in in doing this and and obviously compaction is is key here. So um, we're strongly looking at doing this uh by ourselves or with our internal forces. And just just so we can better control that uh. Uh, but again, scheduling is something that we also have to consider, so. Uh, we're we're just keeping our options open at this point in time, but yes, we have very similar concerns. And ideally, we'd like to see this done ahead. Uh, I guess this is a a another good example of uh some of the stuff we've got to get caught up on here at the county. Uh, we've been trying our best over the last few years, and certainly having Bill on board just gives us so much more time. And another set of eyes on on these things. So this is a small culvert, not covered under the OSM inspection, so it's not regularly. Inspected uh on an interval. And so we do have a few other of these uh around the county, and we're just uh. We're we're playing catch up and uh we're getting to these things, and ideally, we'd like to get ahead of them. Um, just like everything else here, so. Uh, hope that answers the questions for you there on the compaction and culvert issue.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just something I wanted to just kind of mention. Uh, okay, if there's no other questions or comments, we're gonna move on to facilities and land. And are you doing that, Bill? Are you doing that, Joe? Or where are we at there?
Yes, through you, Ward Nature, and I'm gonna look after the facilities uh. Bill's uh. Give him a little bit of a break here. He'll be back for a fleet. Um, the the county's facility portfolio is valued at approximately twenty million dollars. And on average, we spend approximately three hundred and fifty annually on on our capital maintenance costs. And that's just to maintain our facilities, and that dollar figure comes from our facilities condition assessment. Which was done back in twenty eighteen. Uh, in twenty twenty two, the fat facilities capital budget includes two major projects. Uh, representing three point six million of the four point one million dollar budget. And before you hear is the ten year continuity. Uh, just showing you this, you know, we've got a lot of projects on the go here in twenty twenty two. It's gonna be a very busy year for facilities. Uh, and that will likely, most of that will likely carry over into twenty twenty three with certain projects. Uh, the first is the courthouse elevator, and there is a report in the agenda that we'll be dealing with after the budget presentation. Uh, this is a project budgeted one point five million. Uh, last year, we did pre-qualify contractors. And we went out to tender and then uh subsequently uh canceled that in order to apply for accessibility funding. Unfortunately, we've received notice in late December that the project did not receive funding. And we are recommending immediately to proceed to tender with the qualified contractors. Again, we estimate the timeframe for construction is about eight months, and we acknowledge that it will during construction, it's gonna. Um, disrupt staff or tenants, the public. And certainly, at the end of it all, it's gonna reduce office space, uh but this elevator will significantly improve the accessibility. The functionality and the security of our building. Uh, we now move on to archives and uh. Uh, it's the fiftieth anniversary for archives this year, and we have a few little projects here. That we'd like to get done ahead of that. Uh, five thousand dollars to repair and refinish the main entrance doors and. Um, little bit of a tough pill to swallow on and then, you you know, fairly new building. Uh, these are wood doors. Uh, they are very much exposed to the elements and uh. Uh, experience a lot of weathering. Uh, we've included a picture here. Uh, for whatever reason, the design of these doors also uh sort of the self-opening devices and and a lot of the mechanisms are built into the floor. Uh, of of the building, not exactly ideal for our climate and certainly the weather conditions. That we have where uh these doors face. Um, we have ten thousand dollars for new trees planting and preparation of the garden and grounds for the fiftieth anniversary. Uh, at this point in time, we're not expecting to spend the full ten grand. We did have money in there for some tree removal at the back of the property. Uh, but unfortunately, some of those blew down in a uh strong windstorm in late to twenty twenty one. And so we've already had to take care of some of that. And then sixteen thousand is for the second stage of drainage improvements, and this is just a continuation. Of some uh of some previous works that we did there in twenty twenty in the garden area. And tied in some of the eve troughs uh on the building. Uh, those improvements uh did did a great job in uh. Uh, in in helping out to the drainage in the garden area. Uh, we've had the the contractor who originally did the plantings come back. And put in new ones. Uh, the garden is starting to re-flourish and uh. And we're looking to build on that uh drainage improvement in twenty twenty two, and that's gonna focus on the perimeter of the building. And more of the weeping tile and uh more of the downspouts. At the courthouse, so we have thirty thousand budgeted to replace the steam tubes in the in our boiler. That boiler heats both the second and third levels of the courthouse. Um, some of those have sort of eroded through. Nick had to get some of those replaced in twenty twenty one. And we have much further work to do in twenty twenty two. Fifty four thousand is budgeted for the security wall and door in the hallway on the second level. That's in around the uh. Ministry of Attorney General and Judges area there. That project is funded through uh the ISIP program. Um, and that's something we'll just be looking to do potentially later on in the year. And then Corey mentioned too, this is the same funding that we have for Steve's IT equipment in the council chambers. And the extension for that funding is until twenty twenty three. Uh, certainly, uh, we're gonna have a lot going on in the courthouse in twenty twenty two, so just something we wanna see if we. Move ahead with that elevator construction. We don't want to interfere with uh with that. Uh, we have eighty eight thousand to a hundred and forty thousand. We put a hundred and forty thousand in for a generator replacement. And a picture is shown over here of our existing generator at the courthouse. It's a diesel. Uh, powered generator. Um, it's if we have to do any work on it or upgrades. It's, we'd have to bring it up to spec um. The exhaust on that would need to be looked at, and certainly the diesel holding tank would need to be looked at. Um, this generator, though, is in good working order. We weren't really looking to replace it until about twenty thirty three. However, um, it is certainly undersized, and when we put that elevator in the courthouse. Um, say in the in the summertime, if uh it's a it's a hot day and we've got a lot of the air conditioning units run in there. We can't run everything in the building off of the generator, so it just can't take the full load. Um, obviously, the elevator is probably gonna override maybe some of the air conditioning function functionality of the building. So we can control that. We have the ability to do that um. But it is undersized, and given that we're gonna renovate five here on street. Uh, this, it is not powered by the generator and does not have any generator backup, so I think. We want to take a look, uh, upsize that generator, make sure it can handle both facilities. And potentially find an alternate location for it. Um, I'll note to when we get to Public Works Milverton, that is the only facility I believe we have that. Currently does not have generator backup, and um if we move forward with this, I'd be looking to repurpose this generator. Uh, for the for the Milverton yard. Uh, we also have thirty five thousand budgeted for council chamber upgrades and just. I heard Deputy Warden Nagget's question there with the. A Mr. Drake's capital budget presentation with some of the IT upgrades for for county council, and just to confirm and and. Uh, that the council chambers will remain where they are in the courthouse, so POA and the. And the council chambers and which substitutes as the POA court will remain in place at the courthouse. There's no new court uh courtroom or council chambers in the renovated area of Five Huron or the addition. Uh, so this is thirty five thousand budgeted for flooring and window coverings. And there's also five K for uh carpeting the main stairways and hallway there. We really wouldn't be looking at doing any of this work until after the elevator construction is completed. So this may carry over into twenty twenty three, uh but we do have it budgeted in twenty twenty two. At the Paramex Services headquarters, we have seven thousand budgeted for the replacement of the UPS batteries, and that's just. Provides an uninterrupted power source. Um, this is our um. Our command center for emergencies and things like that, uh so this is. Necessary to replace these every five years in order to upkeep our systems there. Um, a little bit of a bitter pill to swallow is uh. Is some repairs to the flat roof at this facility, and of course, this is facility is only but six years old at this point in time. Um, uh, I've shown some pictures here. We've had a roofing consultant come in and and take a look at this for us. We did have some leak issues early on, some work done to try and alleviate those. Um, we still have ongoing issues here, and we have confirmed areas uh through thermal scanning. That we have wet and damaged insulation within this roof, and so there are other issues associated with that, some. Early material deterioration, and apparently that is common with flat roofs. Uh, even on at the early onset of age, and we have some leaks and some improper flashing installation here, so. These are, these repairs are required, and we want to move ahead with this uh so that we prevent any further damage on this roof. Um, our roofing consultant will be heavily involved with this project. Um, we have been talking with him recently, and another unfortunate thing is is this budget uh is is a little bit on the old side. And in twenty twenty one and and expected in twenty twenty two. We've seen material prices and and prices for this type roofwork escalate dramatically. So we're probably light on the thirty five thousand budget here. For Paramedic Services Listool Base, um, this is one where in the. In the detail sheet here, a late addition was for thirty five hundred for the additional swipe card access. Uh, that's to secure um the storage room for narcotics. Uh, this is something new that's gonna occur at at all of our paramedic services bases. Um, this thirty five hundred did not unfortunately get added to the total. Um, so I think we're looking at fifteen thousand five hundred for this facility for capital maintenance. In twenty twenty two, that the twelve thousand that is in the budget binder. And I I notified Corey of this, and he will make the appropriate adjustments. We're doing a smoke detector upgrade and uh doing continuing some LED lighting upgrades. And emergency lighting upgrade in this facility. Also, the stairs in this building are in tough shape. Uh, that tread material is delaminating from the uh stairs itself and creating a hazard. Uh, our staff are constantly having to go out there to repair and maintain, and we have six thousand budgeted for that replacement. At Paramedic Services Milverton Base, uh, two thousand to replace the electrical unit heaters in the oxygen room and the front entrance. And again, here, three thousand for the additional swipe card for the storage room. This didn't get uh added to the. Um, budget itself and in your budget binders, and Corey will make that adjustment, so you're now going to see ten thousand for. Paramedic Services Milverton Base. We also have five thousand for. The extension of the generator exhaust pipe at this facility. That is also a diesel uh powered generator. And in certain conditions, and I guess wind direction, that exhaust can enter the facility. We want to avoid that if we can. So we'll just be doing an upgrade there. At Paramedic Services Mitchell Base, two thousand dollars for some masonry repairs, just a minor brick repair that that's needed around that facility. And three thousand dollars for that swipe card access for the storage room. Same thing at Paramex Services Saint Mary's, three thousand or two thousand for the swipe card access at that facility. And then we're just doing in some installation of burnt seed lighting, which isn't present at this current time, and that's about three thousand dollars. At Public Works Milverton, we are doing a lighting upgrade and budgeted about three thousand dollars for that work. Uh, we need to replace the well pressure tank at this facility. The uh the water there's uh. It's uh got a lot of minerals and iron and things like that. We're adding an iron filter. Replacing the media and the existing system and and putting in a new head. We have thirty five hundred budgeted for that. And again, just a continuation of our security cameras at all our county facilities. Uh, this year, we're installing that in Milverton at the Public Works facility, and this system's gonna tie into our existing system. And this system's gonna tie into our existing system at all of our other sites, it's a common platform. At Public Works Mitchell, we have fifteen hundred to replace some metal halide fixtures with L E D fixtures in the front storage shed. Um, that's a rather old building that's been around since the existence of the site here. Um, and we're just going to get those fixture fixtures updated. Uh, nine thousand dollars for some more air conditioning in our I T and electrical room. The temperatures in this room I do get very high, and it's not ideal for the systems and equipment that we have in this room. And we need some additional air conditioning, so that'll be a ductless split to install. And I, and also in our sand dome, uh, we need to upgrade, it's an interior containment wall. And a lot of the boards and some of the supports in there are in really tough shape. And we need, we budgeted thirty thousand to rebuild and repair that containment wall in the sand dome. At Public Works Stratford, two thousand dollars to replace uh, that well water pressure tank there. And again, we're going to be installing security cameras at that facility as well. At five here on or the registry building over Service Ontario and Victim Witness is located. We did have twelve thousand budgeted to replace the water softener and an L E D lighting upgrade. But given the renovation at this facility, uh, those those will be canceled and and obviously uh, taken care of when we renovate. I just wanted to note that in twenty twenty four, we had a hundred thousand dollars. Budgeted for the replacement of the six rooftop H V A C units. And I think I did bring that to council's attention here when we were talking about the renovation and of of five here on. Uh, so we just wanted, we'd likely wanna include those funds uh, into our overall project. With the renovation and the uh, the addition that's going on between five here on and the courthouse. We just wanna make sure we get the specifications and size of these units correct to handle what we're doing uh, with with that renovation. And again, with the courthouse campus, we've got two point one million budgeted for the renovation. Of that facility and the connecting link addition between that building and the courthouse. Uh, we're going to begin the design stage here very early on in in Q one of twenty twenty two. And we're expecting to tender for construction in Q four of this year. Uh, likely, the bulk of this two point one million that's budgeted will be carried over for construction purposes in twenty twenty three. And we're hoping that the renovation at least is completed by June of next year. And again, just pointing out, we need to consider the H V A C units and the generator. Because the dollars for the H V A C, H V A C units and the generator. We're not included in in the two point one million dollar budget. And every year, we got twenty four thousand budgeted for miscellaneous furniture replacements at our facilities. Uh, this varies from year to year, uh, just based on on the need and the condition of the furniture. And then again, this year, we've added twenty five thousand for work in progress. And that just allows us to do engineering consultation or some uh, preparation works. Uh, for for a future capital project. I just wanted to note that one of the uh, the late additions that we had is is some work or potential work here. At the twenty four Saint Andrew Street building, and that is not part or within the twenty twenty two budget as yet. And just to note that if we do anything with that facility in twenty twenty two. Uh, the twenty five grand that is budgeted here for work in progress is likely not going to to cover that amount. Oops, and that concludes the facilities twenty twenty two budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any comments.
Alright, thanks John, uh, questions for John on what he has just presented?
Warden, it's Daryl.
Okay.
Yeah, just just curious here, the paramedic building there, so it's four years old. Is there any kind of warranty or are you willing to, is the? The the company willing to meet with us and work on that with the leaking roof? That is for sure, boy.
Uh, through the warden, uh, Council Hurlick, that was my very first question. So, uh, and the unfortunate part is the answer's no, uh, there is no warranty available here. So I've asked, re-asked, and asked a third time, um, yeah, it's. This is a little disappointing, um. And you know, it's certainly, I know when when we we redid the flat roof at five here on street in uh, twenty twenty. And so we we brought this roofing consultant in to help us uh, build the specifications and the tender for that project. And to help us um, through the inspection of the work being done and things like that. So, uh, we found that to be very valuable to us, um. And we've, you know, he's the one that's done this inspection here at Paramedic Services H Q. Um, you you know, it's not what I wanna hear, but this is, we need to get this done. Uh, it's unfortunate, um, there's no warranty, uh, we're gonna make sure it gets done and done right.
Oh, great, thanks, and then just the second part, just to do with the generator as well. So it's, that's something to, nowadays, there is quite a few people in this business, I just.
Through the warden, sorry, Council Hurlick, you're you're a little garbled there.
Okay, sorry there, no, just with the generator.
Generators, okay.
Yeah, let's make sure we. Source pretty hard and look around, there's, there's good companies in that field.
There's.
Thank you.
There, thank you, there is good local companies as well, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Not hearing any, I just don't see everybody, so I. Can't just tell you for sure. We're good, okay, we're moving on. Uh, next, we're gonna go to uh, Fleet.
Fleet.
I think Bill's taking that back over.
He is, and if I could get Tyler or Sean just to.
Um, Corey, do you, do you want to uh, speak to the continuity schedule for fleet here at all?
Yes, uh, yes, thanks Bill. Uh, you'll notice within this tenure continuity that we uh, we we're looking to the transfer, uh. We did do a transfer last year of money from um, our surplus into the uh, fleet reserve. Um, but when we got into discussions in relation to our tenure continuity. And what was coming up with with the price increases, etcetera, that we're seeing with our fleet. Um, we essentially don't have enough uh, funds uh, within our reserves to uh, make. Um, the, to meet our needs within this uh, within this overall uh, tenure continuity. So to highlight within here, um, the problem is, is when we have late winters. Um, uh, we essentially charge a own equipment rate. Uh, to our fleet, which does generates the offset the operational cost. As well as try to put some money within the reserves to make replacements. Uh, with, while with light winters, we don't generate that, uh, we do, we, it, the operation of the uh, corporation does help. Uh, but it does impact our our money within the reserve. Um, so you notice that there's a transfer from the roads reserve um, to the fleet reserve of about seven hundred thousand dollars. And then you'll have noticed, and then we're we're essentially within the black in the reserve uh, forecasted for the next ten years. Um, so uh, if you did go back in within your binder, you'll see uh, seven hundred thousand dollars coming out of the roads. And we're, we're recommending that we put that into the fleet uh, to make sure we uh, make our commitments with the increased costs. As well as the level that we're trying to do, so I'll I'll turn it back over to Bill.
Thank you, Corey. Okay, so first up here, we have um, under the fleet replacement is the replacement of V zero four three, which is our. Two thousand five cat backhoe, um, this asset has a fifteen year life cycle. And um, it's, it's surpassed its, its uh, service life. And we are looking to replace this unit um, within this budget year. Um, with regards to this particular unit, um, we. Are planning to evaluate the benefits of replacing this unit with a um. With a nine ton or ten tons, excuse me, excavator um, to complement our operations. Um, just finding that this backhoe, um. Uh, we feel that it's underutilized, um, in compared to what we could do with an excavator, um, we could. With an excavator, we can handle a lot more work internally as far as roadside ditching, um, guardrail maintenance. Uh, cleaning up in and around guardrails, um, and also to help us with uh, small diameter culvert replacements. Um, under our current operations, um, any of that work is generally contracted out to uh. To contractors who have units or uh, equipment that um, that is better suited to complete those tasks. Um, the, although we do use the backhoe, um, primarily, um. It's just underutilized, given um, sometimes where our projects are and where that backhoe is located, um. It's a lot of road running to get up to certain areas where we're doing some work, um. We have an excavator, we already have a fleet that would be, or sorry, uh, a trailer, a float that would be capable of of. Um, loading and hauling that, um, so that's just one thing we wanna look at. Um, the the budget estimates that we've received, um, they are very comparable in in costs. Um, whether it's for a replacement backhoe or for that size of excavator. Um, but certainly, as we go through the procurement process, uh, we again want to look at the benefits of. Leasing this type of equipment um, within our fleet or looking at outright purchasing, um. Versus what our capital contribution cost would be um, with regards to its its life cycle. Um, I don't think I have anything else to add to that slide. Uh, moving on here to under munis- or miscellaneous equipment replacements. Is the A V L um, automated vehicle location, um, and patrolling systems. This is um, part of the municipal modernization program um, under intake two. Where we had previously um, submitted an application with our member municipalities. Um, through this grant program to update and upgrade our A V L and patrolling software. And with the intent that's um. Ourselves at the county and our member municipalities along with Saint Mary's would be operating on similar platforms, um. Just to complement our overall operations, um. So this is, this project is sixty five percent funded um, through the province, um. As far as the county's portion of this project, we're estimating twelve thousand five hundred dollars um, to be our component of it. Um, the budget, since the county, we were the applicants and we are the holder of the project itself. We are um, we are budgeting based on the the entire project and then shown as revenue um, being offset through. Uh, the portions that are attributed to the the partner uh, municipalities within this project. Um, so we're looking at upgrading our patrol software, um, our tablet devices, uh, the devices that are used in the field. When uh, when the operators are out doing patrols and our A V L systems, which um, give us the ability to. Track our assets in the field, uh, particularly with winter maintenance, um, with A V L systems. We can record um, plow position, um. Well, material spreading rates, um, and we can catalog all of that stuff. It's stored um, within the system and those are used, um. Well, essentially, um, in defense of litigation, if the need arrives, uh, that the need arises. Uh, just to further document and prove that uh, we are meeting our maintenance obligations. Um, under um, material minimum maintenance standards regulations. I don't think I had anymore to add to that, so thanks, John, um. Replacement of our plow truck, um, this budget, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. It includes a carry forward from last year's budgets, um, where we had ordered a tandem plow truck. Um, however, we won't be receiving delivery of that unit till actually. Um, probably March this year, that that unit is up in Mount Forest. Um, and the plow equipment is being installed on it right now, so we should be seeing the twenty twenty unit. Um, within the next couple of months here, um, and then as far as the twenty twenty two replacement. Um, as council may recall there, uh, a couple meetings ago. Um, we had a report um, regarding a a tender that was uh, issued with no submissions on that unit. Um, so we received direction to negotiate a direct procurement um, for its replacement. And I can report, um, that we have, we were successful in doing so. And we have uh, we have um. Acquired a build slots and um, signed a purchase agreement for that unit, um. Which is scheduled for production in Q two of this year. Um, so this uh, this budget covers those two purchases. Uh, pickup truck replacements, um, this is, this also includes a carry forward from last year's. Uh, procurement for the twenty twenty one truck replacements, uh, we have not received delivery of that. Um, I did get word a couple of weeks ago that it's um, it's been built. So we're just waiting on it to uh, be delivered to the dealership and then um, on to us. And uh, the budget also includes the replacement of vehicle twelve twenty three, which is a twenty twelve. Uh, Chevy pickup truck, um. And we're looking at replacing that with either three quarter ton um, extended cab or a crew cab pickup truck, um. Just kind of dependent on the uh, the need for either one of those types of uh, vehicles. Okay, and on to EMS, um, budgeted here is replacement of. Two of the rapid response commander units and support vehicles, um. This is the uh, this is just following the seven year uh, replacement schedule. Um, there is some specialized equipment in these that uh, will be installed and. Um, Chief Adair is online if there is uh, any detailed questions on these purchases, but um. Can move on to the next slide, John. Um, the E R V paramedics vehicle is uh. Believe this is a a new purchase for a an A, an all wheel drive S U V, um. Uh, I do have a couple extra notes here, um. Yes, this one would be funded through the long term care um, funding as part of the M I H program. Um, it's multi-purpose vehicle as explained in the uh, project detailed sheet here. Also included in the budget is the annual ambulance replacements, um. There's three hundred thousand budgeted for there, I believe that there was some deposit. There's three hundred thousand budgeted for there. I believe that there was some deposits put on these. Units already within this budget um. Yeah, not, nothing further to add to that.
Yeah, and Bill, that's Mike here. I just thought I would just um also mention that this was the pre-approved. Purchase of the two ambulances that council had already um. Had already um authorized us to move forward on because of the fact that there was uh significant delays in purchasing ambulances. We're gonna see the same thing this year. We've already been told by the vendor for. The twenty twenty-three year that they're not gonna start quoting until the summer. And that we probably won't see those ambulances well into twenty twenty-four and possibly twenty twenty-five, so. This was our strategy that we employed earlier and we probably won't see these units until the end of this year at this point. Um and there, I can confirm that the deposit, the three hundred thousand dollars is the remainder after the po- the deposit.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, yeah.
And uh the wheel loader replacement, I believe this is in addition to um your budget package um. That uh came out of a previous council meeting there where we had a report on our loader fleet um. Worth direction to include the replacement of this unit in the twenty twenty-two um budget. Uh similar to these types of equipment in our fleet. We would like to issue tenders for its replacement and. Um similar to our previous load replacement tenders where we would um seek. Uh an outright purchase price as well as leasing auctions uh to give us the ability to. Evaluate those and come up with the the best case scenario for annual. Capital contribution costs um for for owning or leasing these um equipment types.
Thanks, Bill. And Mike. Uh questions on that portion?
I have one question, if I may. The uh tandem truck and the plow, you said that you went out and were able to acquire one. What? Was the cost? Was it reasonable?
Or? Yeah, yeah, through your warden. Yeah, we're expecting, including the the um the plow equipment, we're expecting to be fifteen percent over that. Three hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget for that item. So um. Next council meeting, um two weeks, we were planning on bringing a report for council's information on on that uh that process and how it went and the. The final dollar values on it um. As as well as the the plow equipment.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Warden? Is that Doug right?
Doug here. Um I just, I just, this meeting is getting as dry as can be. I just wanted to tell John and Bill that I have seen backhoes on floats driving down the road. If you can put them on. But my, that's a humor, okay? Anybody? No, what a cow. Um but I did want to say about the the maniacs. Are you talking about renting it as an on-need basis? Cause you don't want to have it sit there three hundred sixty-five days and only use it ten. Cause my worry is, we don't have enough staff to do some of these projects. I know that West Perth, I think, lent. Three truck drivers to the county for a month last year to do road children. So as we do these projects on our own, I just need to to know that we have enough staff. And that we wouldn't buy or lease a a maniacs for the whole year to use it twenty-four days. We would go rent it for the time we need it. You guys are very organized when you're doing your project, so you could rent it for. The second week of July or the third week. Is that more what we're thinking of? Were you talking about at least a year-round a maniacs?
Yeah, through you, Warden. Uh we would be looking at replacing that backhoe unit with either a similar backhoe unit or. Replacing it with a Minix. For um for outright ownership or through a a three-year or five-year lease.
And and could you give me a rough estimate of how many days a year you would need a Minix? Because you can't, you can't move stone with a Minix. You could with a backhoe. Somebody, just whatever you think uh an answer to that would be. Days of use to own it for three hundred sixty-five days as opposed to going down to equipment dealership. Daryl would know. Um guy on eighty-three highly rented all the equipment to build his own shed, high hose and everything. Just, I'm thinking of cost effectiveness.
Okay, I I think that days of. Operation is a is a tough one to gauge um without having that piece of equipment, but I do know that our operations staff. Um has a lot of work ahead of him that can be done with a Minix. Um that's a better suited piece of equipment to do that work. Um as opposed to the backhoe unit um. Where it does not see a a lot of usage um currently.
I think if if I can step in for a minute there too, I think. Counselor Wright brings up a a a good topic and that's utilization um. And I, that 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 is a tough question. Uh I mean, you know, we've already talked about our our plow trucks and their. You know, our tandem triaxle trucks. Um would I love to see them utilized more? You bet. Uh and these are some of the issues that. We're we're having within our fleet reserve. So I think, you know, it it is a good question and uh slightly something we we can. We can certainly uh bring back in in the report um. Again, you know, you're, in order to do a lot of your operations, you do need certain equipment. You do need to own certain equipment. Uh all we're trying to get at here is um we need to take a look at is what can we better utilize here? But uh uh Counselor Wright's comment is very fair in that. The amount of time uh some of this equipment gets utilized, you know, it it's it's something to be considered.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Yeah, uh Warden there, it's Daryl. Yeah, through you, Warden. Uh my comment and concern would be. It it if any farmer who gets an excavator or backhoe for that matter, but more so an excavator. You realize how much you were missing out and how much safer a lot of things become. Slinging loads on, again, like in the yard, this is the thing, quicker at the Minix, sling some stuff on a trailer, sling it off. Where you might use a bucket now, it's just the continuous little jobs you'll be doing with it. And that's when you don't have it sitting there. Well, you just can't go spend eight hundred dollars. Just sling on a bunch of stuff around the yard or move some breakers or whatever you might need to do, and that's what I see the issue is. Is it's just those little twenty minutes here and there when you need it. Well, it's gone, you know, and that's where we get caught. No. Thanks.
All right, other comments or questions?
Well, I'm not.
Uh Jim, just a quick question. Um like there was seven hundred thousand from the roads uh went into the fleet and that. Um was that the uh only place that you could uh find some money to help you out in the in the fleet?
Oh, that question up to Cory.
Yeah, through through the war, uh good question. Um the it we. Essentially, fleet, bridges, roads, they kind of work all kind of together overall um. Uh cause when we're looking at operations, uh capital and nature as well as operations, just overall operations. Um fleet works on the roads, it works on the bridges, et cetera. Um it was just uh it it is a good question, but I think it. Lines relatively well with uh with um uh to supplement the fleet reserve. Uh and looking at where the roads reserve was sitting at, it had the uh essentially allotment of money to be able to. Uh to move that over into the fleet to help with that reserve itself. So they are broken in 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 separately, but I I think other municipalities actually. Um don't even have a fleet reserve. They have a public works reserve, which within when incorporate uh fleet uh roads and bridges altogether. Um we have seg- segregated it out uh for the purposes of just uh uh being able to identify those gaps. Uh so it it for us, it it runs quite uh congruently with the with the road reserve.
Uh no, that's okay then. Uh that's fine, thanks.
And and if I might further that to Cory's comments, and Cory, correct me if I'm wrong. But within our operations budget, I think last year, uh there was uh. There was a surplus, or at least the year before, there was a surplus there, and a lot of that had to do with. You know, we had some light winters uh and and so we added any surpluses to our winter maintenance reserve. And so that's another reserve where you're trying to balance uh and have the right amount in there to cover off. Uh you know, any really bad winters that uh you're over budget on. Uh but at the same time, in the light winter, you're you're not getting revenue uh from from your fleet and. And this is what uh re- really puts pressure on the fleet reserve. So I believe, Cory, you did. Take some of that surplus from the operating and transferred that to the fleet reserve, or am I wrong?
No, you're you're uh one hundred percent correct. Uh we we when we looked at our twenty twenty surplus. Um we did allocate uh about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um that would have went into the winter maintenance reserve. Uh to help supplement uh the fleet reserve uh at the end of the, well, within twenty twenty-one uh related to the twenty twenty year end.
Okay, other questions? Not hearing any. We're gonna try and get through the capital here before we take a quick break, so we've got emergency medical services. Uh equipment and. John, Bill, or Mike, or who's doing that one?
Uh equipment would be me.
Okay.
Risk medical equipment would be me, absolutely. Um through your warden, then um I will uh be quick. I'm gonna share my screen, cause I have some slides here to um help. Uh this presentation shouldn't be long. Uh we only have a few items here. I'm just gonna click share. And I'll stop when I'm done. Can you see that, Warden? The uh it's the ISIM. Okay, perfect, so. Um I've just got a couple of slides here and the very, the very first one, I guess I'll leave it up, is uh technology. Technological advancement and paramedic service training, so we have a.
Hey, can I cut you off just for one second?
Yeah, please do.
Can you uh go to present? That's great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh so this is EM zero zero seven. We have thirty thousand dollars uh for um upgrading and replacing our. Uh SIM equipment on a regular schedule, and this one here is uh we'll be. Applying this towards a simulation system uh that will help us to do things such as um provide us with CPR feedback. Help us to uh practice uh inserting um advanced airways and doing those types of things so that. Uh paramedics can remain proficient at their skills. Um this just, this slide just shows you an example of um of the simulation um that we will be, that we run. Um so during scenarios with mannequins, you can see that mannequin is intubated and then. Behind it or has a breathing tube in them and behind it is a simulated um defib device. Uh the next uh slide, I just uh speaks to um the fact that we've added. Uh in in capital uh through the mobile integrated health program and the LTC funding. We've added some funds in there. We anticipate spending some money uh there to um. Purchase uh equipment that's particular to doing assessments or treating our patients through the mobile integrated health program. Those are a hundred percent funded. Uh through that program, um and we've already spoken about the vehicle that we were gonna bring forward to council for. Uh mobile integrated health program at eighty thousand dollars initially, but we may be purchasing more again that. These, all the vehicles that are required for the program will be funded a hundred percent through the LTC. Um mobile integrated health program. Our medical equipment, EM zero zero four. Uh the remainder of what what's in that budget, what's not funded uh through the LTC program is seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, so we have an annual. Um uh we have some uh funds set aside annually to replace some of our small equipment, so. As equipment expires or breaks um such as suction units, you can see on the left there or oxygen regulators and. All those types of things that keep our business going, so um those are, we access that uh to replace those uh small pieces of equipment as required. Um the power load stretcher is something that I did a bigger presentation on last year, but um we have two in the budget for this upcoming year to replace. And I certainly can report that um uh when I was spending some time and we could be in in person with our paramedics because of uh. The the less restrictions, I was in our education days, I spoke to most of our paramedics in our service and I had a lot of feedback. Um and and a lot of our paramedics wanted to pass on the gratitude of going to the system because it has. Uh single-handedly, in in their words, increased morale and 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 it helps every day in many, many different ways and. Really certainly helps take the strain off their bodies. So this is something that was a great decision that was made uh prior to my time and we'll carry through with it, so. So I pass that on. And then the last slide that I have here is the EM zero zero one for AD replacement. This project was um moved forward from twenty twenty-one into twenty twenty-two. So we have uh ADs that are purchased by the county um that we have in strategic locations and. They are in a replacement cycle, so the time has come up to replace them, and we did move the project forward because of COVID and refocus on. Um the types of things that we needed to do in order to uh get through the pandemic, but that's something that we'll be looking at this year. And then finally, I have a um one additional defibrillator. Those are the ones that we use in the ambulances that we. Um paramedics use on a daily basis to treat our patients and. Um we were one short for having a spare defibrillator on one of our spares, and this will just complete our fleet of defibrillators. So that we can um always have vehicles that are ready to go. So with that, um that ends my uh medical equipment uh presentation and over to you, Warden.
Thank you, Mike. Uh okay, questions for Mike, Bill, or John before we? Cause we're pretty well through the capital portion. Well, not pretty well, we are. Uh any questions? Okay, I got a motion here. Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget presentations. And the Perth County Council authorized staff. To tender the two thousand and twenty-two capital projects. With a wording of tenders to be brought back to council for approval. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Casenberg moves, Counselor Wilhelm seconds. Last chance for comment or questions. Those in favor? Scary, perfect. Okay, uh that concludes that portion of the budget at this point. We're gonna move back into more, so uh Doug doesn't fall asleep on us, a little less dry stuff. Uh but before we do, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. This cow- cowboy's gotta get up and circulate. It's actually getting cool in this room. For some reason, or maybe just because we haven't moved for two hours. Anyway, ten-minute break, and then we're coming back, and I got. Okay, we're good to go. If we get some more faces back to the screen here.
Counselor Willholm?
Look, Counselor Willholm, Deputy Ward Nagget's maybe not back.
Willholm, Kasonberg, and Aggus.
Well, we're gonna. We're gonna reconvene. I know we got a couple of faces missing. But we're gonna move on to public works. And courthouse elevator project, I believe that was probably you, John.
Yes, thank you, Warden, H. Just uh queuing up my computer here. Um. Yeah, as mentioned in the capital budget presentation. Yeah, as mentioned in the capital budget presentation. That, uh, we did not receive funding for the courthouse elevator project. Uh, we did apply back in July of twenty twenty-one. And we got word on December seventeenth that, that, uh, we were not approved for funding and that decision is final. So a little disappointing, uh, just like to thank, uh, Mr. Bridges, uh, I thought he and I did an excellent job with the application. Um, but it's unfortunate to, we did not receive funding. So this, this report's just to recommend. That council directs staff to immediately proceed to tender with the pre-qualified contractors like we did before. Back in June. Um, and again, the construction phase we're looking at to, uh, take approximately eight months. And the tender phase will likely have the tender out for about, uh, four weeks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for John on that, uh, report? Don't see any hands in this now. Okay, I had a motion here. Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator project funding update report. And the Perth County Council direct staff. To tender the courthouse elevator project with the contractors identified through the pre-qualification process. Do I have a mover in a second? Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by. Counselor Ite. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That is carried. Perfect. Okay, we're gonna move on. And the next thing is. Mr. Wilson here. Has an asset management thing in a letter of intent with Branco Construction. So you can take it away, Bill.
Thank you, Warden H. Simpson. Uh, this report is with regards to our, um, copper roads program. Um, in twenty twenty-one, we tendered our projects, um, Branco Construction was the. Contractor awarded the bid for, um, four or three of the four tenders that were put out, um. The fourth tender being a tender which was specific to Golden Place Recycling on one project alone. Um, these tenders included work for. Um, each of our member municipalities, um, in some, some fashion or another. Um, projects were completed as planned, um, in the twenty twenty-one construction season. Um, I, I. I believe the projects were all successful in their outcomes. Um, we had very little, um, disputes or. Interruptions during the, uh, during the projects. Um, similar feedback, uh, received from our, our, uh, member municipalities who were involved with the work as well. Um, as such, we did receive a letter from Branco Construction, um. With the proposal or their intent to, um, to hold the unit rates from the twenty twenty-one. Contract and extend those unit rates to our twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two capital program for. Um, work, um, under that, under this budget year. We did review our procurement policy to see if, um, it aligned with this type of scenario and. Um, under the, um, direct negotiation, um, method of procurement, um, there is. Uh, items within that section that allow for the extension of a existing contract. Um, which would align with the, with the situation, um, before us here. Um, just, uh, a bit of financial, um, information here, um. When John and I budgeted the twenty twenty-two capital work, we carried values, um, of ninety-five dollars a ton. For asphalt, um, with, within our estimates and. Uh, recapping the twenty twenty-one unit rates, um, part of the contract, they, uh, they range depending on. Location of the project, um, from seventy dollars and seventy cents a ton to eighty-one dollars and ninety cents a ton. Um, now those unit rates are indexed, um, based on a asphalt cement, um. Content within our mixed design, um, as well as the, the monthly cost per AC, um. Which is published, uh, bu- by the Ontario Hot Mix Producers Association on a monthly basis. Um, within our capital program for twenty twenty-two, the county alone here, we are looking at roughly forty thousand tons of. Hot Mix Asphalt, uh, being placed, um, throughout the projects identified. And in addition to that, with our recycling projects, we are at about two hundred thousand, um, square meters of recycling. I'm not sure if John has anything he'd like to add, but. Um, nothing further from me on this report.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Uh, John, you're good?
Yeah, we, we're welcome, uh, counsel for any questions or comments.
Okay, uh, so comments, questions, thoughts from council members on this letter of intent? Counselor Deputy Warden Eggers.
Uh, I think if they're willing to extend it for another year, that we should take advantage of that. And, uh, and for Bill said our procurement policy allows it, so let's, uh, go with that for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I had a couple other, I started to go up. The Counselor Wilhelm, you have your hands going up?
Yeah, I would agree with, uh, Deputy Warden Eggers that, uh, we may as well take advantage of, uh. Them holding the rates, uh, in, um. They, they referred to the actual contracts from last year. But I'm assuming it's just, uh, reference only, uh, and it's not any reference to volume or anything like that. Because I would think this year we're doing a considerable more volume than we did last year.
Uh, Counselor Hurlick, I think you had your hand up.
And no, thanks, uh, through you, Jim. No, it's, it's good to see a, a business like this putting this on the table. Motivated in the first of making some purchasing, uh, smart boost on the brand. So. You see this kind of structure within the business more than happy. Put on the table for sure. It's good, oh, thank you.
So back to Counselor Wilhelm's comment. Bill, this would be for all the asphalt, even if it is a higher volume?
Yes, that's correct, through you, Warden, um. It would be for any of the contract items that are in the existing contracts carried forward, uh. Regardless of, of quantities. Uh, the only variable, the only variable here is going to be project location, um. We have three unit rates to, to negotiate on here, uh, and those, those unit rates were. They were submitted depending on mostly affected on location of project and proximity to, um. Essentially their asphalt plant, um, so.
Okay, uh, other comments or questions? I'm not seeing any hands. So I've got a motion here and based on what I've heard. I'm gonna read this motion this way. That Perth County Council receives the letter of intent, Branco Construction Report. And the Perth County Council authorized a one-year extension of contracts. Two oh two one dash oh three one dash oh two. Two oh two one dash oh three one dash oh four. Two oh two one dash oh three one dash oh six. With Branco Construction through a direct negotiation procurement. Do I have a mover in a second? Let's move back Counselor Duncan. And seconded by Deputy Warden Eggers. Last chance for comments or questions on this motion. Those in favor? That's carried pretty well unanimously, but it's a lot. Actually, I think that is a good, a good thing because as we all know, costs are going up and your fuel and labor is gonna be up substantially from last year.
Warden, Warden H. Simpson, uh, just, uh, counselor right is, uh, disconnected there. So he just called me and said he's not able to get in and. I think they're, he said they're digging outside his house or something and. Cut his internet.
I didn't think I saw, I thought I was down a face, but it's hard to tell when you got stuff popping in and out. Yeah, okay, um. We're gonna move on. Council reports. Does anyone have anything under council reports? Okay, bylaws. We don't really have anything there. Notice the motions. I'm thinking that's Mr. Ite that's got back on by phone.
I, the guys, yes, I just, the guys are digging up in front of my house for natural gas and my internet all went down, so I can hear you.
Okay, thanks, Doug. Uh, other business. Announcements. Okay, I'm gonna br- bring up something under announcements here. So as you're aware, we got a delegation with the ministry. With regards to the assessment update. So, uh, we wanna kind of figure out who all we want involved in that or who all wants to be involved in that. So at this point in time. Uh, any of the counselors on the screen want to be part of that? Deputy Warden Eggers, who I talked to yesterday, I think she should be part of it. So here's kind of the plan going forward. I want to see if how many was just actually interested. We would have, uh, our director of fi- uh, corporate services. Uh, our treasurer, Corey. And we'll have the C A O, Lori Wolf. And we'll have myself as the warden. And we will have, uh, Deputy Warden Eggers on there. And am I missing someone? I think that's pretty well got it covered. I think the smaller, the better, anytime I've ever been involved in one of these. Okay, so well, that's dealt with. Okay, we are now going to move into closed session. In accordance with section two, three, nine of the Minnesota law, there's a closed session pertaining to a matter pertaining to legal advice. And a matter pertaining to labor relations. And I'm gonna add one slight little addition, a matter pertaining to facilities. Do I have a mover in a second? Counselor Hurlick, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, okay, so we're in closed session. We're gonna have. Okay, we're gonna record. So we're back in business.
I'll bring a net in just in case there's any follow-up for the reporting out.
Okay, so the first thing we're gonna deal with is. I have a motion here that Perth County Council approves the COVID requirement. For staff when dealing with outside service providers. Moved by Counselor Callum, seconded by Counselor Duncan. He had his hand up last time. I just didn't get to him fast enough. Those in favor? That's approved, permit. Uh, it may sound like I'm trying to move this along, but I think most of us, our hands are getting crushed in with these masks. Uh, we have confirmatory bylaw number three eight five three dash two oh two two. To confirm the dealings of council. This morning. Is read the first, second and third time and finally passed today, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's carried and. Uh, motion to adjourn, uh, twelve twenty-three or whatever it is. Moved by Counselor Kassenberg, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? That's pass.